The Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and our executive session was recommended to amend the agenda to include Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty, a resolution approving an agreement with the Teamsters Local Union Number nine-five-seven. Can I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to amend the agenda. Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the council study session minutes of March fourth, along with the council meeting minutes of March fourth. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. And that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards. And at this time, Vice Mayor Blakeslee is going to make some introductions.
All right, thank you.
All right. We'll have our guests and our host step forward to the backdrop here. This is so we can get pictures and have the Vandelia logo in the background instead of having to Photoshop this in. Well, I'm really excited to introduce and announce the Sister Cities Youth Program, Exchange Youth Program. And I would like to introduce those German delegates here to Vandelia at this time. Linda Schubert is right here, and her host is Mary Williams. And Sophie Schubert, no relation, is hosted by Akira Escalante, but her mom's filling in for her, yes. And Christoph Morgan-Roth, hosted by Dylan Dejo. So we welcome all of our hosts, or all of our exchange students and hosts, and we really appreciate that. It's great cultural exchange for these students. It's a great experience. And I can attest firsthand to this. Mostly, they'll find a lot of these similarities, probably more so similarities than differences. I think you may have already found some of those, right? There's a lot of things that are very similar in life. But just some cultural changes, such as probably going to a Taco Bell. I mean, you have McDonald's, but, you know, there's Taco Bell here. So during their stay for their three weeks, their hosts, they'll shadow their hosts at Butler High School. And so, in fact, they'll probably be invited to take tests. Now, you have to understand, the German students probably, they'll know a lot of the same subjects, but they, in their tests, it's all narrative. They have to write out their answer. Now, as far as Butler students, it's multiple choice. So as you get to take tests, you'll probably get fifty to sixty percent just by guessing. So that's, that'll be interesting. Also, the German students and the hosts will be given the opportunity to see city amenities, such as the police station, the firehouse, and the rec center. So then, on the personal side of things, then they also get to search landmarks in Vandelia. So that'll be like Jim's Donuts. Did you know that was a landmark? Tomorrow, yes, in fact, yes, that is on the calendar right here. Yes. And the calendar, you can see, is pretty full. So they're going to get to experience a lot of things. So yeah, and like Taylorsville Dam, Airline Dairy Cream. So a lot of things, just not in Vandelia. But they have a passport, it's really neat, that they'll have for stickers. So each landmark has a sticker. So as you visit that, then you get that sticker. So you get your passport filled out. So that's, that's pretty cool. So also, you'll see, you'll get to spend quality time, you know, and that's probably the bigger thing, is just chilling, having a chance to understand each other. And personally, this is a great program, because we've hosted several. Councilmember Lewis, your family has too. And if anybody else is interested, just reach out to us, to reach out to my city email. So, welcome to everybody. That's it. Do we have a photo? Okay. All right. And thank you for coming.
Mike, do you want to get in there?
Oh, sure. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, and welcome. And we're glad that you'll be spending some time here in our community. As we move on with our regular council meeting, if you don't want to hang around for all the business and technicalities of it, this is a good time to leave if you like. All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Yeah, Don Hutchison, one oh five eight Bristol. Thank you, council, for letting me have the ability to come up here and speak. What I wanted to do tonight was come in and put a call out to the people of the Lane-Platte area, North Brown School area, and all those affected by decisions that could be made in regards to an issue that was brought up years ago, that apparently they need to come in and start being heard in regards to what is rhetoric that is going around in regards to, on the east side of Kroger's, that land is going to be appropriated for city-specific services, and that, once again, the extension of Brown School issue will be brought up for a vote, taking away the sovereignty, the tranquility of the platte north of Brown School, and that it would be some discussion in regards to something that would only be allowed for emergency access. And I don't think that there was anything that was ever proven that that had to be some ultimate emergency access up there to where all those traffic situations would come in and interrupt the tranquility of that platte. So my call tonight is for all the citizens of Vandelia that live in that area to quit watching it on closed circuit and get in here and let the council know what it is that they want to stay the way it is and not have their platte interrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, we'll move on to the City Manager's Report, where we have a information item. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. We will have a special study session and a tour at the Tri-Cities wastewater plant. We've advertised this as a public meeting on March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, at three P M. This is simply a tour of the facility with General Manager Danny Knife. There's no formal action to be taken by council, other than just the tour itself. This, of course, is an optional meeting, and I know many of you have toured or been to the Tri-Cities facility. With the likelihood of there being a quorum, this tour will be open to the public. And of course, if any member of the public would like to tour the wastewater treatment plant, first, it's great. But number two, we can always rearrange another time if anybody would like to tour that plant and learn how we take care of the environment there. Next thing that I have for you, Your Honor, is I'd like to thank Communications Manager Rich Hopkins for his long hours and hard work in developing the two thousand twenty-three State of the City video. That was presented at the annual Chamber of Commerce meeting on Tuesday, March twelfth. We've loaded that to the city's YouTube channel, as well as social media. Look out in your mailboxes, the week of March twenty-fifth, the My Vandelia magazine should start to arrive. And Youth and Government Day starts tomorrow at eight-thirty A M. Last week, I had reported, or a week or two weeks ago at this point, I had reported that Congressman Turner's office notified us that we have two pending earmarks, that one was a name change from the Right-of-Way acquisition to simply providing for city infrastructure. That's the one point three-three million, the other one being seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Tri-Cities Wastewater Authority. But last week, I got contacted by Senator Brown's office, and when I was in DC last year, I went to lobby on behalf of the city, and they put into legislation four hundred thousand dollars for congressionally-directed spending at Robinette Park. And so, I'm working with Director Clark to work out the details for that, and I would propose that we move forward with the, with the planned development phases that we have going on there. We also got the final letter approving the surface transportation funding. That's eight hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars to resurface Poe Avenue, two hundred and sixty feet north of Image to Stop Eight, Weiss from the Seventy-Five Bridge to Webster, and Miller Lane from Benchwood to Stop Eight. That construction is likely to take place in two thousand twenty-seven. We will be hosting with Butler High School, at Butler High School, Sunshine Law Certification Training on the twenty-seventh of March. Executive Assistant Swartz went ahead and coordinated that for us with the Auditor of State's Office, and we have a online registration for that. And then, second to last, I would like to compliment and say congratulations to Director Leiter, Assistant Director Karns, and also Communications Manager Hopkins on issuing the city's first popular annual financial report. And so, this is a really great read, especially if you work in local government, but it's meant to make the city's finances more accessible and easier to digest by the public. Finally, in regards to the Public Works Facility, I'll just give a brief update. And I know that at multiple ventures, we've, we've talked about, there's no plan at this time to extend or have real traffic moving through North Brown School to the sixteen acres that's allotted for the Public Works Facility. As we, as we develop those site plans, one of the things that we try to consider in multiple locations is having multiple means of egress and ingress. I, I would reiterate, I agree completely about making sure that we're able to maintain the tranquility of the platte that's just to the south of that. And so, you know, one of the things that we've reiterated to the architects and the design professionals as we go through this is that all of the ingress, day in, day out, egress, is going to be, is planned, is will be, through Northwoods. When we go to Plow Snow, for example, to the south, we'll go around Northwoods rather than out. The idea behind this, having a gated access point on the south side of the parcel, is we, we do have to respond to catastrophes that some of us were not able to see. And so, it could be something as mundane as a jam that relates to airshow traffic. It could also be a bridge collapse. And so, for those reasons, we've included in the draft design ingress and egress, but that's by no means meant to be something that is day-to-day and, and would directly about Robinette Park. So that concludes my report. And certainly, if you have other questions or comments, I'm happy to address those.
Anyone have any comments or questions regarding that right now?
Yeah. Mr. Went, does that mean that you're going to make access up Brown School through the, the platte that he was talking about?
The, so, there, there are a lot of options that you could have with it being sixteen acres, you know. Councilmember Dugan, I think the idea is that you would have a gate, that you would be able to open up that gate, for example, if there's a fire at the facility and you're not able to access the northern point and get through. I, I think preliminarily, I do not anticipate that the figures will make sense. We already have, we had before we got that property donated, on the east portion, designated easement. And so, that easement will stay there in case, let's say, in a hundred years, it's completely different, and it makes sense for the city to extend the roadway. But, but at this time, we don't have plans to, we're not going to extend the roadway in a public way that allows folks to traverse the entire platte.
Thank you.
Yeah. So no would be the short answer.
I can.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, if he's done. If I could interrupt, we'd probably let the guests go if they're interested in staying. You're welcome to. If, we don't want to bore you too much with some of the legislation of the people, but you're welcome to leave, or you're welcome to stay. So just give you that opportunity now.
Go to Taco Bell.
Yeah. Or Waffle House.
All right, moving on, we have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution twenty-four dash R dash seventeen. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution awarding the bid for asphaltic concrete requested by the Public Works Department to Barrett Paving Materials in the amount of seventy-eight dollars a ton for type-two asphalt and seventy-seven dollars a ton for type-one asphalt as the lowest and best bid.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, bids were publicly opened for the asphaltic concrete purchase on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Two suppliers submitted bids for the purchase of asphalt. This asphalt to be purchased will be used by the Public Works Division to patch and to make repairs, including utility repair holes, such as water main breaks, and to resurface portions of the Castle Hills Golf Court, Golf Course cart paths for the Parks and Recreation Department as part of our annual project. Barrett Paving Materials was the lowest and best bidder at their bid prices. Barrett Paving has been the low bidder in past years. But at times, we've had issues with them meeting our needs for availability and the desire to provide the type of asphalt mix that we need on any given day. Due to this, I recommend authorizing the ability to purchase asphalt from either Barrett Paving or Valley Asphalt, which is to say and/or, at their respective bid prices, with the first choice being Barrett Paving, if they are able to meet our needs on that particular day. On occasion, we may need to purchase materi, if we need to purchase material, we'll reach out to Barrett Paving first to give them the opportunity to supply that to us. And this is consistent with how we've done this project in the past.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution twenty-four R seventeen as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilwoman Dugan, that we approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash seventeen as presented. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash R dash eighteen.
A resolution awarding the bid for resurfacing of various streets requested by the Development and Engineering Services to Barrett Paving Materials at the lowest and best bid price of nine hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, bids were publicly opened for the resurfacing of various streets on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Three sets of specifications were issued, and three contractors submitted bids for the project. Those bids ranged from nine hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents to one million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, seven, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and forty-nine cents. Our estimate for the project was nine hundred and ninety-six thousand. I recommend awarding the contract for this project to Barrett Paving Materials as the lowest and best bid at their price of nine hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-three R eighteen as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash eighteen as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Council, Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash R dash nineteen.
A resolution approving a financial contribution to the Historic Society of Vandelia Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, there is fifteen thousand dollars appropriated in the two thousand twenty-four budget for an annual donation to the Historical Society of Vandelia Butler for maintenance projects and to include the cost of an annual business slash organization membership. It is necessary for council to take formal action to authorize this donation.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-four R nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash nineteen as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. And we modified our agenda at the beginning to add Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty.
A resolution approving agreement with the Teamsters Local Union Number nine fifty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, this is, this is a resolution to approve that agreement with the Teamsters Local Number nine fifty-seven. They represent our public works technicians and also our office manager down at the Public Works Division.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-three R twenty as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Avalotus Weaver to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty as presented. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero. We have one ordinance in its first reading, that being Ordinance twenty-four dash zero-three.
An ordinance amending Chapter fourteen eighty-two of the Vandelia Codified Ordnances by providing a policy related to the storage of construction materials on all of the private property within the city and codifying same as Section fourteen eighty-two point two-four of the Vandelia Codified Ordnances.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're proposing an amendment to Chapter fourteen eighty-two of the, the Housing and Property Maintenance Code of the City's Codified Ordnances. The amendment would limit the number of days that construction materials could be stored on a property with no activity or work taking place. This addition to Chapter fourteen eighty-two would limit the time of inactivity to thirty days from when any work has taken place, or thirty days from the expiration date of a permit, if the permit required, if a permit was required for the work to be performed. This section would allow enforcement of this requirement to existing conditions.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve Ordinance twenty-four zero-three, first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Ordinance twenty-four dash zero-three in its first reading. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. We have one ordinance in the second reading, that being Ordinance twenty-four dash zero-two.
An ordinance amending Chapter ten sixty-four Cemeteries of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Vandelia, Ohio, by establishing new rates for cemetery operations.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, the city received a survey of cemetery fees comparing other local jurisdictions. The cemetery fees for Vandelia's Poplar Hill Cemetery were last modified and took effect in January two thousand nine, but have not been substantially changed since nineteen ninety-nine. After reviewing and comparing our cemetery fees to thirty-three other jurisdictions, Director Borton and I believe that it is appropriate to adjust the cemetery fees. The purpose of the adjustment would be to better cover the city's actual costs for these services, such as personnel, equipment, and materials costs, which have increased since nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand nine, respectively. The, the other thing that I would point out in this is that it's much of the services that we provide, and the actual cost of the plots themselves remain unchanged.
Kind of a cost of living expense. All right, since this is a public hearing, I'll open a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Ordinance twenty-four dash zero-two in second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Ordinance twenty-four dash zero-two in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. We have no emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from Boards and Commissions. Item A is a variance from the BZA of Ordinance twenty-four dash zero-three driveway entrance sign setback at thirty-three forty-five Stop Eight Road. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Mr. Steve Weeks, on behalf of Mr. Greg Demming of L N W Supply, has requested a variance to allow two driveway entrance signs to be placed within the minimum two-foot setback requirement for the property located at three-three-four-five Stop Eight Road. The applicant has proposed adding two driveway entrance signs with a zero-foot setback from the right-of-way. On February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval.
Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance for BZA twenty-four zero-three, the driveway entrance sign setback at thirty-three forty-eight, forty-five Stop Eight Road, as recommended by the BZA.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve the driveway entrance sign setback at thirty-three forty-five Stop Eight Road. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes seven-zero. Next, we have a variance for the monument setback sign at thirty-three forty-five Stop Eight Road. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, the applicant, Mr. Steve Weeks, on behalf of Greg Demming of L N W Supply, has requested a variance to allow a monument sign to be placed within the minimum ten-foot setback requirement for the property located at three-three-four-five Stop Eight Road. The applicant has proposed adding a monument sign with a three-point-five-foot setback from the lot line. On February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval with one condition, which is, the sign shall be landscaped at least thirty inches from the edge of the sign with live plantings or mulch. edge of the sign with live plantings or mulch, per City Code Section 1236.11F9.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve BZA 24-04 variance for the monument sign setback with the recommended condition.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve the BZA's 24-04 monument sign setback at 3345 Stop Eight Road, with the one condition that was noted. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Moving on with our reports from boards and commissions, we also have the Park and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of November 15th. Are there any comments? All right, we'll move on to the February 2024 bill listing in the amount of $2,713,885.69, along with the month expenses over $50,000, and the month's purchase, purchasing card detail in the amount of $26,886.86. That brings us to council comments, and we'll begin this evening with Mr. Law Director, Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Went?
No comments, Your Honor.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
I just want to say, I stopped by the Puppy Easter Egg Hunt, and it was really well-attended, and we had, looked like everybody had a great time, and the dogs were really adorable. And I think our next event is the Adult Easter Egg Hunt, that's coming up, and they have some, and again, we have some really great events, so please make sure to check it out, all of the rec center events.
All right, thank you. Council, Councilmember Fars?
Nothing this evening, thank you, though.
Councilmember Follak?
Just to echo the city manager's comments about the popular annual financial report, I think it's a great addition to our collection of public documents that we provide for our residents, and as he mentioned, it's the first time we've done it, so thank you to Mrs. Leider and her staff, and Mr. Hopkins for getting that out. Are we mailing that, or is it just going to be?
On this run, we just printed 100 copies, and we, we considered mailing it, it, we kind of wanted to see how it was received, and we'll, we'll have it available online as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, just real quick also, to congratulate Mr. Went on his recognition with the Dayton Business Journal's 40 Under 40 class for 2024, I guess. Is that right? Yeah, so congratulations, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lewis?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Dugan?
I hope everyone gets out and votes tomorrow. That's all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Nothing else that hasn't been said tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, and I have no further comments. It's recommended a council and our executive session to discuss with the city attorney pending or imminent litigation. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Fars. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Member Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Then we'll come back and adjourn this meeting.